To our consent agenda, we're adding item 50, resolution amending the municipal water sewer budget to recognize partial balance of the funds cash reserved in order to provide for certain necessary improvements.
They want to turn your mic on. Yeah. So she can't hear you.
Hello?
That's better.
All right, unanimous vote with deming out of the room. Go on to the presentation agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I really don't have much of a presentation, but we're going to give it... Is he here? Okay. We just finished our fourth marathon, and that's 26 miles along our beach, and tremendous event. And I want to introduce Craig Sweeney here to come talk a little bit about the event and give us a brief presentation about the next coming marathon. Thanks, Craig.
Very cool. Thank you. Hello, my name is Craig Sweeney, one of the co-founders of the Mississippi Gulf Coast Marathon. And yeah, we just finished our fourth year and looking forward to our fifth anniversary in December. The marathon will be December 13th this year. So, super excited. We had runners from almost all 50 states. Over 60% of the runners are from outside of Mississippi. So, a lot of happy casinos and hotels and restaurants in almost 11 countries. So, thank y'all very much for being gracious hosts. Certainly, a lot of runners fly south in December to get away from Canada, and it's been great the last four years, so.
Thank you, Craig.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and this is our art print.
Come on, I want to get you right here, man. I like this. Hold on one second. Smile, Mayor.
Okay, and departmental reports.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Matranga, project manager for Oscarinda Contract, and I'd like to give an update report on the status of the North Contract. The sidewalks and driveways are complete on Forest and on Cuevas, south of Division. We have moved to Benaki to complete the sidewalks on the west side, the sidewalks and some driveways on the west side of the road. We continue to work on the sewer lift station on Cavett. We had a small little change and had to order some rails for that, but we anticipate finishing that up by the end of the month, the beginning of next month. Surface course of asphalt has been completed on numerous streets throughout the project. There's only a couple of streets east of Cavett that lack surface course. That's north of Division, Elk, Strawberry, Percy, Elder, Raynor, Anglada, and Fayard. We have crews working all over on restoration, landscaping, cleanup, and we're also in the final phases of punching things out. The project is substantially complete. We're doing final walkthroughs, scheduling final walkthroughs, and just doing a lot of punch-out work. And that's about it.
Questions? Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
On Circle Park, all you have left at the top layer, that's it?
And some fencing and some, probably there'll be some landscaping type work, but yeah, the major item would be surface.
I tried to get that park redone, so I figured that's... Y'all, that bog gone, then all we have to do is get a little black top, then we can fix the park up.
Okay.
Just check it back out. So I figured that's pretty much where you're at.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Gaines?
Tisdale, okay. A few questions. George mentioned something about fencing. A lot of the fencing that was put up, I might ask if you could go back and look at some of it. A lot of the fencing that was put up, they didn't use any concrete, and now they're all falling down. And I think I submitted some to Mr. Rhodey, so if you don't mind going back through, looking at some of those fencing, because they're falling down. The other thing I have is the last submitted schedule, there was a completion date of, I think it was March 2020. I don't think you guys are going to be able to keep that, but is there a new projected date of completion?
We're just moving as quickly as we can from east to west to finish the project. We've been stopped from laying surface course of asphalt, so trying to work around that.
How many workers do you guys have out there that are... Because, you know, right now, after Christmas, I didn't see any workers east of Calvet, you know, for at least a whole month. And so now I see some of them going in drains now, look like they're going in drains through some roads that have already been, had their final coat on it. And, you know, that kind of worried me, because if they find any problems, that means you guys are going to be digging up some brand-new roads.
Any problems we've had, we've been able to fix. And we have the manpower we need to complete the project.
You don't have the manpower?
We have the manpower.
You have the manpower?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's one of my concerns, because, you know, manpower, you know, I guess we've got two different definitions on that.
I don't think so.
Sidewalks on Bowen Street, they, you know, that's been done quite a long time, and it's been almost six months. Where they started on one side of sidewalks, you have a completion date on it?
On Bowen Street?
Bowen, Bone Street, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Bone, B-O-H-N.
We're complete with the sidewalks on Bone Street. If there aren't any sidewalks there, it's because they're not going to be there.
The west side of Bowen Street?
Yes, sir.
So you don't plan on finishing those?
No, sir, it's complete. I mean, as per the engineering department, some sidewalks throughout the project have been eliminated. That street is complete. You could get with the program manager if you have concerns.
Okay. Okay, and last, I've been asking for some cleanup in the community, grass growing through the sidewalks, and until the project is turned back over to the city, it would be nice if we can have the roadway and areas cleaned up, grass mowed, or what have you, and we haven't had that for at least three or four months. So it'd be nice to, you know, have our area cleaned up a little bit from time to time.
We have done that in certain areas, but I'll see about catching some problem areas.
Yeah, but there's 55 miles of area, and it hasn't been done in quite a few areas. And of course, I drive it every day, because I live there.
That's right, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Matranga. Council reports, Mr. Lawrence.
I had a busy weekend. We had the 5K run here Saturday at the Mardi Gras, and they had a children's parade, they had a nice crowd at the children's parade. We had to get that door fixed pretty soon or later, so they don't scare people to death. You know, you're going to have people going to have heart attacks in here, you have two medical people in here, you know? Have to have some nitroglycerin taken care of, you know what I mean? But those were two great events. They kind of ran together. I don't know if that was a problem at the end when they were trying to give out the awards, so you was here for that.
Yeah.
And the children's parade was coming at the same time, made a nice crowd for those two good events. And the people, Jerry, y'all did a good job at the children's parade, and people doing the masks and that, them kids loved that after the parade, the little arts and crafts thing, that was pretty neat. My sister brought her granddaughter there, and the first thing she did was run right there. They weren't running by the parade, they were running by, doing the mask, so that turned out great. And my son-in-law and my grandson running the 5K race, so they had a ball, so it was a good race. It was probably there wasn't more than 100 people, they had to figure to be a bigger crowd, you know? So when you see the 250-pound guy cross, that's my grandson. He ran pretty good, though. The next we got this weekend, I know Kenny going to get all excited, got the Neptune Parade Saturday night. It's a big event, bring a lot of people downtown on Saturday. It's a good event for the city of Bloxton. I know it's a lot of work for the police department, the fire department, but I tell y'all, I bring two bottles of nitroglycerin. And then they have, naturally, Tuesday, we have a Gulf Coast Carnival, so we've got a lot of stuff coming up this week with all the events and the coronation ball and other things, so it's just a big time for the city of Bloxton. Couple questions to you folks, we have people say have been surveying the fence behind Tuxedo, and it was wondering if Keesler's going to do anything with the fence, are they moving that fence? Have anybody from Keesler taught to y'all anything? Because they don't want to... We're not infringing on that property back there, so I don't know what the deal is. But they've been having surveyors out there. You know where Tuxedo is, don't you? Okay.
I've been talking to me about the fence on Tuxedo from Keesler. I can inquire and see who, you said somebody's out there now?
Well, it was last week, so they've been surveying, and these people weren't about them taking their backyards, but I can't see Keesler moving that fence for a few feet. But I mean, I don't know, you know? So I just wanted to check to see.
I've seen they were taking some fence down, but it was on the north side of that area, inside where we have the right-of-way. I didn't see any stakes or anything like that that would indicate that they were going to do something to that fence, the existing board. I don't know.
I'll see what I can find out. I'll call Keesler and see.
Right, Tuxedo ran our way to just see, because I went, I mean, that was the road back there, so.
Yeah.
Just checking out the... People get a little nervous, they say, we're not about to know, because it's hard to beat Keesler. But I don't see the purpose in them taking that, but I just thought I'd quiet this meeting to see what was going on with that. And let's see what else we got here. Cherry Bell, I know, I need to find out, it's time to move on Circle Park. We've been having the money there, I don't know what's holding it up. That's why I asked her, she said all I got to do is that top layer to do, so it's time to get that park fixed.
Yeah.
With the county, and they're going to assist me.
So we have, you got anything I have on the table?
Well, you know, I think I drove it today, again, you know, specifically. I don't know how many, you know, opportunities for tennis, but there could be some pickleball there.
Yeah.
Okay, and as well as just paint and updating some of the recreation things, but yeah, it's time. Once, you know, the North Contract is sort of settled, and just, you know, whatever they do in surface course would be a problem, but yeah, we're all in on that.
I've been with Ms. Beverly, we can handle, they're going to help us with some of the groundwork. A lot of that is sinking in.
Yeah.
You've noticed, so we're going to open a new playground, working on the tennis court, making tennis and pickleball. Kind of waiting for that, too.
Yeah, we need to take down two confined trees that are leaning, they're getting ready to fall, so they need to come... They serve no purpose anyway, they're just in the way of the ball field. When they want to play football or soccer or whatever, you know, they're just in the way, so that needs to be taken down. Let's see what else, that's it.
Mr. Gaines?
Thank you.
George, you still play football?
Oh, yeah, we still throw the football.
Yeah, I want to thank the mayor and Walt for meeting with me Monday, try to get a plan of action to close out this, the North Project. As you see, it's been a long, long time coming, and we're trying to move forward in getting that closed out, so thank you guys for meeting with me and getting a plan of action together. I want to also thank Cherry Bell for today's program that we're going to be having from Six State, Biloxi Civic Center, the Black History Program, our annual...
Gruitch Center, Gruitch.
Oh, Gruitch? Oh, okay, well, I'm sorry, I screwed up then. I don't rarely make a mistake like that.
Just once a week.
Okay, once a week, the Gruitch Center, and featured, featured, the featured group will be Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and they always put on a good show with Mrs. Leiborn, so thank you, and that concludes my report.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, just a reminder that Thursday, the 27th of February, there's a Ward 5 meeting at 5:30 at the Donald Snyder Center, it's open to the public. It's not Thursday of this week, it's Thursday of next week, because next Tuesday is Mardi Gras, so I can't remind you next week.
At the Gruitch Center, or is it at...
No, that's going to be at the Snyder Center. If you would, if you would tell Councilman Gaines that we'll be at the Snyder Center, he can answer all the hard questions for me. Keith, I'm going to try this and see if we can get a picture up there. Ooh, there you go. How about that technology? This is, I checked with Mr. Rhodey, and this is Forest Avenue, and those are the new sidewalks, and you'll notice that the telephone poles, which is, they were there before the hurricane, they were there when I was a kid, and if you're disabled, it's going to be tough to navigate that sidewalk. The, let's see, I got to figure out now how to get back.
You press it again.
Maybe that's what I do. There you go.
That phone pole looks just like you, Paul Ball.
Hang on, don't interrupt me, George. So here's an intersection, this is just, this is just south of the Forest Avenue gate. Let's see. I wonder what happens if I press that button? Nope, that didn't do it. Let me back up here.
Technology.
I know. It's one of these ID-10T errors. Let me back up and see.
I'm not sure what it was.
But I want to, I want to get to one particular picture. I'm thinking...
You have to have skinny wheelchairs.
No, where do I, how do I advance in a slide? Thank you, there you go, that's what I got to do. Okay, no, no, that, this is where I want to be. This is the slide before, and this is headed towards the bay, and then when you go...
It's greater grace on the end, right there by it.
A little further, and to the left is the entrance to the Keesler Gate on Forest Avenue, but I noticed this sidewalk, and I'm thinking, given the fact that it's, it looks fine till you get to that foot on the left, and there's like a 45-degree angle where it goes down to the curb and then the gutter, and I think it's not delineated, so you could be in for a wild ride in your wheelchair if you stray too far to the left. I don't know if that needs to be marked or anything, but anyway, Mr. Rhodey, if you, if you don't mind, I know that, I was talking with Mr. Rhodey about this earlier, and I think he's done some follow-up, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. So in regards to the power poles that are in the sidewalk, it was decided when these sidewalks were going to be rebuilt to make them a little bit wider, so they're at least four feet wide, pretty significant. And they were decided to put behind the back of curb, because the power company is going to come in and they're going to relocate all their power poles to the east of those photos behind the sidewalk, get them out of the way. We met with the power company this morning, and they, your intention is to begin construction the first week of May relocating the poles. There's other poles on that same area that are, they're the power companies, but they've got like AT&amp;T and cable on them, so they're going to have to engage them to remove their lines and put them on the new pole locations. Power company, they feel pretty confident they can get their work done fairly easy. It's working with the other communication companies, it might be a little bit more difficult, but they're going to be engaging them. As far as that issue there, the retaining wall you see to the right of your picture, which is the east as you look, as you drive on Forest Avenue, that retaining wall has a footer on it. What the contractor did was match the top of the footer and brought their sidewalk over, and then tried to tie it, tie it down to the back of curb, so it will have to be redone. They didn't want to cut off that footing wall, footer to that retaining wall, because it's a substantial wall. So we'll probably end up having to make some, we will make an adjustment there behind the back of curb, so yeah, I'm familiar with it, and I brought it up previously to my staff.
So to, just to review what you said, Mississippi Power and some of the other services will be relocating the poles and those services to the east of the sidewalk?
Correct, behind the sidewalks.
And does Mississippi Power, do they eat the cost of that, or is that included in the North Project?
It'll be under Mississippi Power Company's costs.
Okay, good deal, thank you, Walt. Appreciate it. The only other thing is everybody have a nice, safe Mardi Gras, and build memories, and have a good time with your family, a good, safe time, right, chief? With your families. Thank you so much.
Mr. Graven?
Yeah, Mardi Gras in full swing, as some of the other council members mentioned, we got some big parades coming up. The parade celebrity this year for Neptune is the Ying Yang Twins, and they'll be playing the mayor's favorite song.
Yee Krunk.
Yeah, that's right. So, no, that'd be, it ought to be a really, really good time. Also want to mention this Friday, we're going to have a, kind of a, we got some of the floats and some of the Mardi Gras costumes, people kind of dressing up in some characters to have a children's Mardi Gras parade at North Bay. We used to go around the circle a few times, throw them a few beads, and they really get a big kick out of that, so we'll be enjoying that. Anybody want to come out and support it, we'll get you up on a float or get you some beads to throw around for a few minutes. They really look forward to that. And then on a couple of serious notes, I just want to keep it on the forefront, the drainage project that we're trying to get the supervisors to kind of support in the Waters View area, just want to make sure we got that dialogue going, and we don't lose sight of that, so they can kind of get it on their budget and project list, and that we can kind of do a co-op with them. Mike, is that still a viable project?
Yeah.
Okay.
Waters Edge Drainage.
Waters View. I just still want to make sure it's a viable project, I know we got the permits and all that kind of stuff, but...
I actually have been playing phone back with...
Jackie.
The new county engineer, with Jackie. And I'll try to, so I'll try to touch base with her again this week. I haven't heard from her probably since we last tried to talk, but it's still out there. I'll push back on them a little bit and see what's going on.
All right, well, appreciate that, and last but not least, I'll be having a ward meeting in March, I'll get you the dates soon, and it will not be at the Gruitch Center, but we'll select a site in Ward 6.
Visitor Center is available.
Maybe Visitor Center, but no, it'd be in Ward 6, and we're putting the elements of that together, and I'll get with the different departments to make sure it doesn't conflict with any of your busy schedules. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Barrett?
Just a couple of things. Are we getting close to the bidding on the park closing?
It opens next week.
Closes next week?
Opens next, opens next week.
Okay, good deal. And then a few weeks ago, Mr. Tisdale had asked Chief Fire Department and Police Department for some numbers in regards to the Fourth of July, our New Year's on fireworks. Have we got those?
I can have them for next meeting.
Okay, yeah, if we can do that for next meeting. And then the other day, chief, I know you were out last week, and I saw that the lady talked to who you had in your place here, but the mayor and I rode out to Hudson Crone at the Emerald Lakes area, they've been having some, some issues, major issues with speeding, and we rode out there and looked at it, and we don't know what...
No, it's a difficult situation, especially with trucks.
It's in two curves, and you have the dump as well as the waste management trucks, as well as the public dump right there, and they have all these trucks, and if one of those vehicles leave the road, they're going to be in their, they're going to be in their living room. I mean, the houses are really close to the road right there, so if we can look at that and see, you know, get some speed signs or some kind of flashing lights or something to try to slow that traffic in between those two curves, and then when we were out there, we also saw that county and the city are working together on Mason Road, which is one of the worst roads that needed paving in the, in the city, so that's a good thing. That's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to the public agenda where we have...
Could I ask?
Okay.
Could I ask one question, Walt?
Yes, yes.
Walt, they started working on Benaki between Railroad Track and Howard Avenue, and it looked like they quit, or is there a problem?
I think, last I saw, but that little, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And one, one last thing, Walt, you got to remember that, you got to check out Dixie Hair come March, it's going to be St. Patrick times, you're going green.
Maybe I'll go blue.
Listen, man, no, you got to be green, you can't be blue. So I just thought you may pay attention, as you've been an engineer, we're going to see what it looks like.
All right, thank you.
So funny, like my dad.
Funny, really, really funny.
All right, move on to the public agenda where we have citizen comments. We have a total time allotted of 45 minutes, each citizen gets three minutes each to speak. Once you reach the desk, please sign your name and address, as well stated out loud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Yes, ma'am.
By the way, Madam President, your hair looks nice.
Thank you.
Stands out very nicely.
You and Paul.
Well, my name is Suzanne Patac, and I'm here about the Rattuci subdivision again. I left here last time, I had asked about the three items that they promised us if we would ignore zoning laws. And anyway, I was told that the green space is already in my backyard, that 15 feet of easement, but how can they give me something that I already own? I find it extremely audacious. It's got my name all over the deed, and I own that 15 feet, so they promised us green space, which they're not going to give us, and fence, which I don't want on my back fence because I will lose four trees. That was a nice threat of theirs, you know, okay, we put the fence up, then we take the trees down. I do not want to lose those trees, they're actually growing into my fence. And the gate, I think you guys have pretty much solved that for the time being, anyway. But I think that I'm still not happy, and I don't see how there's going to be a resolution to this, because if they put the fence up, I lose my trees and I still lose the green space. If they don't put the fence up, then maybe we can have some green space, so maybe that's the only resolution to this, is to eliminate the fence. And I've got, I've got chain links, so I can see their property, and as soon as they put a teaspoon to dig for a tomato plant, I'll call the city. It'll be as simple as that. But I'm not going to be a real nice neighbor about it. Well, it's, it's not that I'm not, but anyway, I'm just not happy still, and I just want to make sure that there is a resolution, otherwise I just, I just have to keep talking. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
My name is Janelle Finley, I'm public affairs specialist with the U.S. Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Assistant, out of Atlanta, Georgia. Here as the representative for the three counties that was affected for the Blue-Green Algae Incident that happened the 22nd of June through October the 5th. I'm here to make sure that everyone know that we're still here giving assistance. My agency have offered a low-interest loan, disaster assisted loan, to all the small businesses and nonprofit organization in the whole, I guess, the whole three counties that was affected, Harrison, Jackson County, and Hennock County. I just wanted to open up that I am the... I just wanted to open up that I am the point of contact for if you have any questions or any, need any kind of assistance for into finding out what kind of assistance SBA can offer. I can be here to answer any questions to any, any citizens. After the meeting, I could be in the, in the back if you have any questions. Again, my name is Janelle Finley. They call us SBA, well, Office of Disaster Assistance, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
How long are you in town for?
I'm going to be here now until the end of the week, but I also want to point out the assistance is until October the 16th, 2020. Right now, all the centers have been closed, but you can still get assistance through our online assistance or the 1-800 number we had offered. But if you need any of the documents I have brought with me to pull up any of those web links, I'd be happy to give them out. Again, I'll be in the back if anyone have any questions.
Yeah, we thank you. We thank you. We'll include this information on B News and the website as well as BTV, so...
Oh, okay, great, that's good.
We'll have to provide that information for you and thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me come. Thank you.
Anyone else on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Monica Teal and I came to the meeting from Biloxi, I'm sorry, from DeIverville Planning and Zoning Department. And what's happening, I live on 999 Gay Road in Biloxi and they're getting ready to instruct a RV, a 264 multifamily unit in a clubhouse and garages right across the street. Okay, pre-Katrina, they had planned right on the side of Gay Road to open up a service road, which, on the left side, which we are, on Gay Road in Biloxi, once you cross the street, you're in DeIverville. And that road is so small and skinny, it's not going to be able to accommodate traffic going on either side of the road. And they've already, Walt, DeIverville did send me over here saying that they don't have the money, basically, to come and talk to you guys. But anyway, they've already started with the, with the big trucks and everything, starting to get this project off the road. And they said to come over here and see, see what you'll be able to do about the traffic, but that road is so small and there's already big trucks and everything coming on both sides of the roads. And when we're, and there's also school buses that go down that road also. And pre, like I said, pre-Katrina, they had planned a service road down there, but then after the storm, nothing ever came of it. So, DeIverville did say they're getting ready to widen that road on their side of DeIverville, but that's just on the side. It has nothing to do with the road left or right, has nothing to do with the traffic going that way. And we basically, as soon as you come to the stop sign to go down to the house, just before you get to the highway, you have to basically stop and let the traffic, depends on who, who's coming first around, or who's coming first that way, and let the traffic go before you can actually go. And so, that's, it's just going to be, we're not even going to be able to get to house and people are already complaining and everything, so...
Do you have the addresses on Gay Road? If you, if that information, we'll follow up on status of both us and what DeIverville's planning on doing.
Okay, my address is 999 Gay Road, Biloxi, Mississippi, 39532. Across the street, DeIverville. That address, that address is 11066 Gay Road. And it's right across the street and that's where the big project and everything is going to be. As a matter of fact, they've already started building and stuff and all the trucks and all that, so they're, they're starting.
We'll look into it, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak before the council? Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone in the back of the room? If not, citizen comments are now closed. Move on to the policy agenda, Ms. Lucy.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances to address performance, increase eligibility, et cetera, for employees.
Previously moved by Mr. Tisdale and Barrett. Mr. Tisdale, any discussion?
Excuse me, yes. I'm just hoping we move forward with these ordinance revisions in order to update them to comply in one instance with the Family Medical Leave Act. I think that was approved 10, 15 years ago. Just trying to play catch up on some of these others, other personnel-related ordinance as well. Dealing with the merit council, my understanding is we no longer have or use merit councils. Talking about leave, unused leave and how it's credited to PERS and units that, that PERS requires. And limiting employee tuition assistance to $5,250 per calendar years, per calendar year. That and performance increases to be conducted at a particular time, I think, in, in what's proposed, it would be March 31st, but at our workshop, did we agree that March 31st was the date we were looking at?
Yes, Councilman, we made, based on the comments in the last meeting, we made two changes. One was we are eliminating the word anniversary date so that the performance reviews are done annually by the end of March each year. I left at your place, on your table, example of the evaluation form that we use with a note that it's going to be revised before we do, we'll be doing these in March, annual reviews for all the employees. The other, the other thing we talked about, we talked about sick leave.
I know I've talked separately with Councilman Lawrence about sick leave. One of the things I left at your place, just so you kind of feel for just how big or not big this problem is, we have 21, excuse me?
15, 15 part-time employees. They are mostly either harbor masters or lifeguards, virtually all, all but two. We spent a total of $588 paying out sick leave for part-time employees last year. So you can see that's really kind of a tempest in a teapot here. It's not a big deal. We're not required by any state law to do sick leave, that's just a Biloxi thing, do sick leave for our part-time employees, but we do and it's costing us all of $588 a year. So I would, at this point, if it were me, I'd leave it alone. And I, it seemed like there was one other little, very small change made, but these, the only two changes we made have been made in that ordinance, so it's ready to go. We're, you know, we're, I've got the ordinance book here. I had it here last, last week, too. It is chock full of things that have been overtaken by events and we're trying a little bit by little bit to get through it. I mentioned last year that, last week, that there's still an ordinance in here about our landfill, which we don't have a landfill. There's an ordinance in here about trash cans being, metal, metal trash cans, no more than three for residents. We just have a lot of work to do to clean up our city ordinances. And this, this one that's before you today is a cleanup of the personnel section. I'm not saying it cleans up every issue we've got in personnel, but it cleans up six of them.
Thank you. I'd just like us to move forward and approve this. Today, we've tabled it several times and we've had a workshop on it. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Mr. Barrett?
Nothing.
Anyone else? Mr. Lawrence?
I think the part-time, for part-time employees, I think, like you said, it really not affecting anybody. I just think that'll be removed completely. Not really affecting anybody, so removing it's not going to really affect a whole lot of people anyway. But she's part-time people, part-time people. And I just think that should be removed from the, or stricken or changed or whatever I have to do. You talk about $5,000, I mean, it's not, it's not serving any purpose for anything. So that means that's one you need to get rid of. You want to update stuff, update that, get rid of part-time.
Yep, the $5,000 on that sheet is for leave, both annual leave and sick leave. So they earn annual leave, a very small amount of annual leave, and they earn a smidgen, a little tiny amount of sick leave. As you can see, it was only $588 during the year. The rest of that $5,000 was annual leave that they earned. And most of those, as I say, most of those are either harbor masters that, you know, earn a day off every once in a while, or they're, or they're lifeguards. That's, I think that works, the 13 of the 15 of them are in one of those two categories.
I just don't see any purpose of that being in the articles anyway.
We're not going to go to the mat on this. I mean, you know, it's, it's, if the council wants to get rid of sick leave for part-time employees, we'll, we'll strike it. I just don't see it as being a big deal.
But this, when you said harbor masters or lifeguards, just a couple of things come to mind. Some of these folks may have been with the city now. I have no idea who they are or how many or whatever for a number of years, could be 10 years, 15 years, that they're part-time, they're, they're filling in for somebody, maybe odd hours, maybe they like working the graveyard shift. I'm particularly sensitive to lifeguards just because I know particularly at the Snyder Center, when they are, for example, when there aren't enough lifeguards reporting for duty at the, at the Naterium. What they do is they pull lifeguards from the Snyder Center, which means you've got seniors in the morning or the pool is not open until 12 or 1 o'clock. It's not, currently it's not open all day. It's just a portion of the day, five or six hours, and that's because we can't keep enough lifeguards. So it's only going to cost us, what, 580, 600 bucks a year and another 5,000 or 6,000. There aren't, there aren't many folks who are affected by the lifeguard issue, but I hear about all the folks at Snyder Center, particularly seniors who are there bright and early, they show up for work, they, for work. They show up to swim and, well, we had to schedule a lifeguard that was supposed to be at Snyder over at the Naterium and we've closed the pool now for a day or two. Or if, or if somebody takes, a full-time employee takes leave, it just kind of depends on the lifeguard situation. And that's been a, it's been a little better recently in the past year or two, but previous to that, it was, that's one thing I got a lot of calls on, so I'm just sensitive to that issue. Thank you.
I think, if I may, I think you, you see some justification for that, is what, I think, in, in that explanation.
Couldn't have said that better myself, Mr. Mayor.
Believe me, the lifeguard not standing there for that extra $100. I mean, I don't know what y'all read and stuff that, that you make it up. Nobody's standing on that job because of the next $100. You're talking about 15 people, $5,888. So people not standing there because they get that extra $100. They, but they want to be full-time, then get on the city, be full-time. Other than that, they, you should not be paying part-time people anything extra, period.
Okay. Mr. Guines?
Yeah, I, I agree with Paul that I like everything that, and the changes we made, with the exception of one thing I want to keep in mind, this evaluation process, and I spoke about that the last time. I would like, you know, you're the mayor, Mike Leonard, to, after the first year, let's look at this evaluation process because we want to be sure that we get it right. And a lot of times, we had employees misraise us, mismerit pay because of those situations I mentioned the last time. So I'm really concerned about this when it comes down to evaluating our employees. Annual is okay, we can do it on their birthdays or whenever, I don't have a problem with that. But after the first year, we need to really take a look at it and evaluate it so we can get it right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Nope. 5-1, Deming out of the room. Move on to Resolution B.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plat approval for property identified as 6178 North Bend Drive.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Glavin, seconded by Mr. Barrett. Any discussion, Mr. Glavin?
I have none.
Mr. Barrett?
None.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to Resolution C.
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision plat approval for property identified as 2330 Atkinson Road.
Okay. Mr. Stiefel, come on up.
Make the motion. Fix me.
So we tabled this for you to be able to go to your client and talk with him, so what did y'all come up with?
Yes, ma'am. We met at length with Dr. Bertuzzi Friday and, and shared with him some of the thoughts that were brought up with the council last week. And we, we studied the plans a little bit closer and, and there's a few things that came up that we, we just hadn't really thought through. But his, his general reaction to putting the fence on the west side of this utility easement is, is very problem-prone and he's, he's very much against that. He owns the property on the easement. You know, the easement is, is basically a permission to lay that fluent line across his property, but they don't own the property and so what, what he wants to do is he wants to maintain the property and the use of it and any subsequent purchaser or lot owner on that property. So, let me, if you don't mind, we've put together a sketch since Councilman Tisdale...
But I'm two pounds heavier today.
Thank you.
Is this one? So the sketch kind of summarizes what's going on geometrically on the property. The heavy line between the houses is the property line. Then you have a 15-foot drainage easement on the east side of the property line and you have a 25-foot utility easement on the west side of the property line. The drainage easement on the east side of the property line belongs to the city. The 25-foot utility easement on the west side of the property line belongs to Harrison County Utility Authority. What we had spoken, I'm just going to kind of hit the highlights here, but what we had spoken, discussed last week, we, we mentioned there was a minimum of a 40-foot green space. And we actually, upon further study, realized that the green space is actually between the homes, the actual house structures will be at least 45 feet, a little bit more than what we thought, and probably will be more than that. Most, most people do not necessarily build their houses on the setback line, the rear yard setback line. They tend to consistently put the front of the house on the front yard setback line, but the rear yards, it just happens to be where the house ends. Sometimes that's on the rear yard setback line, sometimes it's not. In this case, the rear yard setback that was approved with the reason of this project, this development, was 15 feet. And you can see that labeled up there. The 15 feet goes from the property line to the east towards the house, towards the new houses in the Bertuzzi subdivision, but the actual 25-foot utility easement goes another 10 feet farther than the 15-foot setback. And so effectively, that 25-foot utility line easement becomes the setback line because you can't build a permanent structure in an easement. And so you'll have the 20-foot building, building setback on the east side of the property line plus the 25-foot setback on, or utility easement on the west side. The combined total is actually 45 feet. And probably many of the houses will actually be a little bit farther than that away from the houses, the existing houses on Sailor State's, in Sailor State's subdivision. So you've got a minimum of 45 plus feet. There was some, the reason why I mentioned this is to explain this drawing, but also to mention there was some, so some concern from the neighbors that the houses were going to be too close together. So you've got a minimum of 45-plus feet. There was some, the reason why I mentioned this is to explain this drawing, but also to mention there was some concern from the neighbors that the houses were going to be too close together. And what this basically shows is that there's going to be at least 45 feet and possibly as much as 50 or more feet between the new houses and the existing houses in the two subdivisions. And the existing houses in Saylor State's are actually less than, in some cases, they're 30 feet from each other in many cases. So just about every house in Saylor State's is much closer to each other already than the new houses would be in the new subdivision to the Saylor State's houses. So, but getting to the, so essentially what's going to happen is you're going to have a 45-foot minimum and probably a little bit more than that green space between the houses. Now, some of this green space, you know, the existing residents in Saylor State's subdivision, they've elected to put their fence on their property line, which is normal procedure, and they are maintaining that 15-foot drainage easement as their backyard, which they're entitled to do. It's their property, and they're paying taxes on that. That is precisely what Dr. Bertuzzi wants to do with his property, which is done basically throughout the city and in all communities, is just do the same thing these folks are already doing in Saylor State's subdivision. So they want to, Dr. Bertuzzi wants to allow that 25-foot utility easement to double as these folks' backyard of the new subdivision. This would allow these folks to actually mow and maintain this easement for the Utility Authority. It would save the Utility Authority maintenance costs of maintaining that easement and enjoy this 25-foot space instead of it becoming a dead space. If you did put a fence on the west side of this utility easement, people would have a tendency to throw things over the fence and just not see it, out of sight, out of mind. That happens unfortunately. And so what we're trying to do is actually utilize the entire piece of property. The other thing that Dr. Bertuzzi brought up, and he asked me to mention to you, is that if the eight-foot fence went on the west side of the property, I'm sorry, the west side of the 25-foot utility easement, there's nothing that would prevent the residents in Saylor State's subdivision from, and some of them don't have fences on that property line already. So there's nothing to prevent them from allowing their pets or kids to use that 25 feet, especially if there was an eight-foot fence on the west side of that easement. They wouldn't even know they were there. And so not only are these people in Bertuzzi's subdivision paying taxes on that 25-foot easement, but they're not getting to use it when they're paying taxes. And furthermore, the residents on the east side in Saylor State's would have access to it. And on top of that, they would, if somebody got hurt, God forbid, you know, if one of the kids, if a child got hurt, a grandchild got hurt, and there's 25 feet, then all of a sudden, they've got liability exposure. So there's a lot of reasons not to put that fence on the west side of that utility easement. And frankly, in light of the comment made today by one of the residents there, we are perfectly willing not to put a fence at all, the eight-foot fence. But we're also willing to do whatever the city desires. We will put the eight-foot fence up there if the city wants us to put an eight-foot fence, but we would, we would be, or we could handle it on a lot-by-lot basis.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, and this is going to you as well. So reading what this letter states from you to us is because of that easement, we should take away the requirement for them to have to put the fence up. Is that correct? And are y'all okay with that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So if we take the requirement away from you having to put that eight fence up on the east side or west side or wherever, just take the requirement of an eight-foot fence out of the thing, because from the letter that Peter said, our city ordinances want to allow us to put that eight-foot fence up anyway. So it's really, if we pass it, we can't, I meant, the fence can't be put up according to what Peter gave us.
Yeah, we're willing to do that.
And so we take that away. So I'll make a motion to take away the requirement, wherever it's at, for the eight-foot fence to be put up anywhere.
Well, and again, in light of, if I'm picking out a term, please let me know. But in light of the comment made today, it's the first time I've heard this, but if the residents in Saylor Place do not care to have that eight-foot fence there, then I think maybe the best thing is to do exactly what Mr. Abad said, and that is handle the individual homes on a lot-by-lot basis. And that's what's happened in Saylor State's. You know, some of these folks have wood fences, some of them have chain-link fences, some of them don't have fences at all. And it's, and these individuals in Saylor State's and in Bertuzzi, they're going to be the ones paying for the fence, if there's a fence that goes up at all.
Peter, can you explain this to us?
Yeah, I mean, my comment was just, we have a permit procedure already in place for all of our subdivisions, and not to require, I mean, yes, it could be put right on the edge of the easement, possibly. We don't know exactly where the outfall line is. If the outfall line is closer to the boundary line, we shouldn't be requiring, as part of this, to require you will put a fence here. The easier thing to do and the better procedure is just to say, we're not going to require a fence. As your property's developed, you want to go back, talk to the Utility Authority, they have to sign off on it. Our community development and engineer and public works have to sign off on it. But we can deal with the fence then, and it may be, I mean, shrubbery may be better. There may be a temporary fence option to be put in place, but not to require some permanent structure right now. That's what I was saying.
I agree with Nathan. I think the fence causes more problems than it solves. I mean, that's the main problem. But you don't need a fence, period. Just don't do it. When I want to ask you, you got the 45 feet. You got 15 feet on Saylor's side, 25 on Bertuzzi's side, right? Where'd the other 5 feet come in there?
That's actually 20 feet on Ed Saylor's side. There's a 15-foot, if you look at the drawing, there's a 15-foot drainage easement that's adjacent to the property line, but the actual building setback line in Saylor State's subdivision is 20 feet. And so the houses can't, they're 20 feet from their property line. And that 20 feet is added to the 25 feet, which is 45 feet. That's how you get it.
But on the Bertuzzi's side, you're not going to build it right on the side of the easement?
Probably not. They'll probably, and that's what I was mentioning earlier, most people don't build their backside of their house on the back rear yard setback line. They will tend to build the front yard, the front of the house at the front yard setback line, so there's some consistency going down the street, but the houses will just go back as far as the house plan calls for. Usually that's going to be, rarely does it go back to the rear yard setback line. Usually it's going to be 5, 10, 15 feet at least away from that rear yard setback line. So the green space, the effective green space provided will likely be 50 or 60 feet.
But nothing in that ruling says they can't do that.
That's correct. They can, they're allowed, just like everybody else is, to fill up the footprint and to build to the building setback lines, which essentially most of the folks in Saylor Place have done. Their lots are a little bit shallower, they're smaller in depth than ours are. And so they would have a tendency to build, have built, and most of the houses do, if you look at Google Earth, we didn't go out and measure them, but if you look at Google Earth and study that, most of their houses get to their rear yard setback line, whereas most of the houses in Bertuzzi's subdivision probably will not, because the lots are deeper.
I think that probably should be in there, should be at least 30 feet. I mean, you don't want to build that right on the side of that easement anyway.
I agree.
So you can't be coming down a step into the easement, then when they start tearing it up, you have a problem. You know, so I mean, I think that should, I don't know if y'all are going to do that, or that needs to be written in there. But I second Nathan's thing. I think the fence thing just creates a problem. There's no need for it, so there's no purpose to anybody really, to Saylor people or Bertuzzi. So I think that just needs to be removed.
And just to circle the wagons here, to just finish, a couple of little final thoughts, what we had discussed, that we are willing to give a minimum of 10 feet right-of-way for the improvements of Atkinson Road on the north side. Obviously, that's all we control, but there's a good 1,000-plus feet that we can help the city with. That's a big distance, and it might be all the city needs for additional turning lanes, whether you talk about turning north or turning south. That 1,000 feet of a minimum of 10 feet right-of-way may be adequate to do the road widening improvements. That remains to be seen, depending on GRPC's study. We are also more than happy to accommodate the city's request, or at least what we had discussed prior, and that is put in a Knox box gate on the Bonneville Connector Street from Saylor State's to the Bertuzzi subdivision. I think, you know, and then finally, you know, it was mentioned, I'm not sure if everybody got hold of this, but that we are actually going to provide a connection directly to Pops Ferry Road from Phase 1 before we move on to Phase 2 and Phase 3. So all the residents in Phase 1, the 111 homes, will have the ability to not access Atkinson Road if they're planning on going north across the bridge.
Yeah, I was going to ask you that question. If you had a road running from that to Pops Ferry, sort of business is another thing when you finish.
And, you know, as far as alleviating traffic, just a thought to throw out there that with that Knox box connector there, then the Saylor State's subdivision residents who might very well like to take that avenue to go north will not be able to do that. Whereas that, if you left, if you took the Knox box off of that Bonneville Road, now we will assure you, we're not going to send any construction traffic through Saylor State's. That's not appropriate. But once the subdivision's done, and the traffic's flowing, and you're building homes, if the, and the residents are living there, it's likely that Saylor State's residents may desire to drive through the new subdivision to access, and that's a city's call, but I just want to make sure you guys are aware of the logistics of that.
The 112 homes creates how many cars? Two, two at least?
Roughly two per house, on average. But that's spread out over a whole day. You know, you might have two or three trips. It will be inexorable.
Okay, Paul. I second Nathan's motion to remove the fence.
Go ahead, Tez.
Yeah, I just want to be sure I understand. So as we move from east to west, you have a Saylor home, that footprint, and then the footprint of that house is five feet from the setback line.
You're talking about the Saylor State's house?
The Saylor State's house. So you've got, you've got where the house is physically located, and then you've got five feet over, which is the setback.
No, that's not correct. If you look at the, if you look at the drawing, you'll see that, you see the note there and the dimension that shows the 15-foot drainage easement?
Right.
Okay. Then right above that note, you see a 20-foot building setback?
I got you. So in other words, right now, with the fence that they have, the Saylor residents have a 5-foot backyard?
No, no. Effectively, they've got a 20-foot backyard.
Okay. I got, all right. So we got a 20-foot backyard, all right? That's where the fence is. That's why I'm asking these questions, all right? And then another 25 feet over, and you are up against the proposed Bertuzzi homes.
Minimum.
Minimum.
It is likely more than that.
Now, we have an ordinance, I think, that says you can't have any permanent fixtures over an easement? So I don't know when this ordinance was put in place. I'm assuming it was prior to the Saylor residences putting their fences up?
I'm not sure if it was in the old ordinance, if it was passed into 2018.
Okay. Well, the Saylor development was there before then, so I'm assuming it was okay to put a fence there. However, given this fact, if I purchase a Bertuzzi house, I can't have any fence over the easement or past that easement line, that back 25 feet. Is that accurate?
It's up to the distribution and the director of the public works.
Okay. So if, I'm just thinking how these homes might be marketed. So if I want to buy a Bertuzzi house, and I have a pet, or I don't want people walking in my backyard, would I get a fence there? And where would that fence go? According to Mr., do we need any permission from the Utility Authority since it's a easement? I would think that we would for that 25 feet. Right? So you got to get, so as a homeowner, you might sell me the home saying, if I ask that question, well, you can have a fence, but you have, perhaps, but you have to get permission from the Utility Authority, and then our public works, if they were agreeable, then you've got to get the Public Works Director to agree. Would that be accurate, Mr. Creel?
Either of which would be far preferable to having an eight-foot fence on the back of all the house. So it's much more practical, much more useful and marketable to have no fence back there than to have an eight-foot fence at the west side of that utility easement.
And then I'm thinking the other thing is the Utility Authority or whoever's going to maintain that easement, would it be the Utility Authority? It would. So they have to have access off of Atkinson to keep trees and whatever, and no permanent structures. What about, what about boats or motorhomes that I want to park in my backyard, which may be on the easement?
Anything that would park in there.
So I could park all six of my bass boats and set up my camper and...
Paul, the other thing is that the, you know, the Bonneville Crossroad there, the connector, that road will also provide access to the easement. So it's not going to be just from Atkinson Road, because that road crosses the easement, and that's going to be a pellet right-of-way. And so the Utility Authority will be able to access and maintain the easement from both sides of the Bonneville Connector, in addition to Atkinson.
Okay. And I want to, just, I took a couple of pictures. I may be, may only be able to show one, since I can't figure out how to advance this. I think I got it now. But this is, I can't enlarge it or anything, but this is at Bonneville. You see the asphalt of Bonneville right there at the bottom of the photo. And then you see on the left are Saylor Homes, and there's a bird bath. I don't know if you can see it. It's just a little top and to the right of the center.
That is using Bertuzzi's property already.
And, yeah. And so I'm thinking, okay, what you see in the backyard of the Saylor residences, that includes their, the easement. Correct? So then that 25 feet, I'm guessing, and you see Ms. Patac referred to that oak tree along the fence line, and you see other trees there as well along the fence line. She'd like to keep that. I don't know if it's a big deal or not. But then on the other side, you see that oak tree at an angle. That's, I don't know, I'm guessing, I don't know if that's 25 feet or not, but that's about where the fence line would be, where the current gate is to the Bertuzzi property. Look, I did it. So this is on Bonneville Drive looking north, and you see the Saylor residences on the right. And I'm thinking, those trees straight ahead, those trees have been there for a while there in the easement. I'm guessing that they're going to have to be cleared or removed or whatever.
Oh, no. I think it's...
It zigs and zags, because within that easement, the pipe is not necessarily straight. And then this is the gate there at the Bertuzzi property, and I'm assuming you see the, on the left, you see the hurricane fence, a chain-link fence, and I'm going to guess from that chain-link fence, that pole to the pillar there where the gate's attached, I guess that's 25 feet. I would assume that fence is there along the property line. So I think that's all the photos I have. But going back, you can see about, again, where that oak tree is at an angle on the right. That's about that, that's the 25 feet we're talking about. So if a home were to be built as far to the east as possible of a Bertuzzi home, it would be about where that tree line is on the right, correct? Roughly?
That theoretically would be possible.
All right. And then to fence in, if I bought one of those lots and built a house, then to fence my property in over the easement, again, I've got to get approval from the Utility Authority, then I've got to convince the Public Works Director. And even then, I certainly have to understand that whatever kind of fence I put up, if for some reason the Utility Authority's got to go in, there's no guarantee that the Utility Authority's going to replace my fence. I put that fence up at my own risk. Would that be accurate, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the Public Works Authority, the Public Works, I'm sorry, yeah, the Public Works and the Utility Authority would both have the prerogative to say, if you're going to put a fence up, put a 12-foot gate up where our equipment can get through it, rather than tearing down the fence. That's done frequently throughout the community.
Right. But I'm thinking if you have, I don't know how many houses are between Bonneville and Atkinson, but let's say there's 16, then if you have 16 property owners that want fences, and the Utility Authority's going in, and I'm also thinking if, for some reason, it's of an emergency nature, they might knock on your door in the morning and say, "Good morning, we're tearing your fence up." Boom, and head straight to the bay. But the other thing I want to point out is the backyards currently, if you were to have a fence, an eight-foot fence, it would be where that tree line is on the right, basically where the...
The fence gate.
Where that, where that gate is. Right?
You're saying if they, if...
I mean, we were talking about an eight-foot privacy fence, and it would have to be there if you were going to put an eight-foot privacy fence. But I think we agreed that, hey, we're better, we're better off without the fence. So then I have a choice as a property owner... property owner, if I buy a new home, and that is, I, I put a fence after, if I get permission, and after I get permission, with the understanding that that fence could be removed by the utility authority, or by the city for that matter, if we have to get in there to do something, and that it's the owner's, uh, expense to replace that fence.
Right.
And do, has that happened in the city, where we have taken down fences and required the, it, that has happened in the past? Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, because it was hard to visualize, and it helps me to have some pictures. I don't know if it helped anybody else, but I understand it a little better. Thank you.
Peter, I have a question for you, 'cause you live in that subdivision off of Jordan, right?
Yes.
Your backyard, does it sit close to the neighbors?
My, my house on Jordan is probably one of those that is back up against the back setback. I mean, uh, I'm farther back. A lot of the houses are more to the front, and, uh, so yeah, I've got, I've got, there's some trees that were there when I bought the house, but yeah, I understand that, uh, if somebody come in and wanted to do work, they would probably rip all my trees out, so.
So this is pretty typical then, right, Jerry?
Yeah. Well, there was, and there's a fence that separates, uh, my house and the house behind me that's on Melissa.
So my question
Interesting predicament. Uh, we have the same problem in Ward Four right now with Councilman Demings and Councilman Demings Ward, where we've got two neighborhoods that back up to each other, and they both, they all have fences, and drainage is, needs improvement. So who's gonna take the fence down to fix the drainage, and who's gonna put the fence back up? This is a problem the city deals with, you know, and, and in this case, we're not gonna wanna let people, you know, people put any fences up, given, given that we have a high-pressure sewer line that somebody could drive a fence post through. I mean, if, if, uh, I think we're gonna make it very clear to the people moving into that neighborhood that they're not gonna be able to have fences behind their house, because, I mean, we're talking about, what is it, Billy Ray? How big around?
Forty-four.
Forty-eight-inch high-pressure sewer line running right through the middle of that.
It's actually not a high-pressure sewer line.
It's, it's not, it's force.
It's a force main.
Force main, yeah.
But it would be considered a low pressure. It would not be dangerous, but, uh, we're, point well taken. And, and this, this easement is not a drainage easement, it's a utility easement. And, and just, you know, from experience, uh, that there's a big difference between the twenty-five-foot utility easement and the fifteen-foot drainage easement. Drainage easement seem to be needing, need, seem to need maintenance on an annual basis.
Mm-huh.
This, this utility easement is not a gravity sewer easement, it's a force main.
Mm-huh.
Uh, and, and the, the maintenance required on something like this would be very rare and, and very, very far between. Uh, I'll be, I would bet that there's probably been very little, if any, maintenance on this line since it's been installed.
Mm-huh.
Now, it doesn't mean nobody's going, you know, that they're not inspecting it, just to make sure that everything's good, but, but this type of line, just an effluent, treated effluent line from the sewer treatment plant, it's a force main. Uh, it is just essentially, at this point here, it's, it's flowing almost by gravity out to the bay.
Right. So would the city have, the city have a problem with going in there and regularly and cut down trees that are in that easement, in their backyards?
Say that again?
Let's say they got a tree, an oak tree in their backyard, a small oak tree that they plant, and we, and we don't want it there. Can we go, can we go in there and cut it down in their backyard?
Well, that's more of a legal question, if the easement
Yeah, I'd say no.
Yeah.
But it seems to me you can.
Well, if you go back to one of your pictures, when you're looking north, I mean, I, I think when we were researching this, the, uh, the line was put in in nineteen ninety, roughly, and so that was thirty years ago. Those trees towards the end of the property, I mean, those trees have either, were already there, there maybe were small trees then, but they've grown up, and it's not, nobody's coming in to cut those trees down. It's just, it's the possibility, if there's repair or maintenance in the future, those trees could be removed, or, you know, if they don't have any other way to go around them. So it's not, uh, like a DMZ zone that has to just be swept for minds and kept clear every, every year or every day, so it's, uh, and, and they're gonna access it at the easiest point to access it, too, if they have to get into it, but I'm not aware of any work being back, back in there in the last fifteen years that I've lived there.
Right.
Good questions.
Or in my backyard either, there's been no work done.
I, I don't necessarily have a question, but, you know, I know we, a couple of weeks ago, we looked at this, and, uh, I wanna just express my appreciation to your company, uh, for, for doing a lot of homework and research on this, and trying to work out a solution with the, uh, current subdivision and the new, new development. I mean, this is what we try to do, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a physical fence, like we mentioned earlier. It could be a hedge row, or, or some flowering, uh, you know, plants or bushes or whatever, and, uh, you know, I think we can work this all out, so, thank you.
I think I would like to see that, plants and bushes, things like that, to separate. Anyone else?
So I guess I'll make the motion to take away the requirement
Got a motion by Mr. Barrett to amend, and seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Is there any discussion on that?
Yes, what is that amendment, please?
To remove the requirement to have an eight-foot fence somewhere.
And let, let it be in the jurisdiction, the appropriate jurisdiction.
It's, it's part of the planning commission's
They're removing the requirement to build an eight-foot fence.
I think you could accept the recommendation of the planning commission, with the exception of a requirement of an eight-foot, eight-foot fence.
Okay.
That.
Any discussion?
Does the covenant?
All in favor?
All in my
Unanimous vote with Deming out of the room. Any other discussion? Now, uh, voting on the resolution amended, as amended. All in favor? Unanimous vote with Deming out of the room. Do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
None.
Mr. Glavin?
Uh, yeah, I have one on I, if I could have Christie kinda come up here and, it's been a while since, this is the sediment, uh, project, and it looks like we've got three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars allocated to the sediment project. What specifically, I mean, those schedules, where, where are they at again? Can you remind me?
Okay. So right now, we are doing dredging in Goose Point and in Bayou La Porte, the Ben Oaks area. The dredging contractor has pulled off of Ben Oaks, 'cause it's real shallow in there right now, and he's doing, trying to work as much as he can in Goose Point, so he's coming back. We are also in the process of getting another round permitted, which includes, um, like, the, some areas in Cedar Lake, um, some areas, uh, there's a big long list of, I can't remember, probably like ten different locations. Those are going through the permitting process right now. The other thing we have going on is, we have the dredging master, or the sediment removal master plan that's being developed by Seymour, that'll kinda, we've been kinda, um, willy-nilly about the dredging. We've been hopping all over the place, so we're trying to come up with a master plan that will also help us next time we have a hurricane, that we can show what the level of sediment was before the ca- storm came, that we can, we can survey again, and this is how much was surpassed by the storm. So that's kinda where we stand with the dredging. Uh, we've got this money as we get more of the county money, and we put more money into the dredging of the sediment removal project, so that we can kinda keep it going.
So the project list that we reviewed, I, I don't know, nine months ago, I'm gonna say, where it identified those specific areas?
Yes.
Are, are those still in process?
Those are still in process.
Okay.
And we've actually heard back from DMR, all but one of those have submerged aquatic vegetation, and most of those are in your ward.
Right, of course.
And so, yeah, I know. And, uh, so I've been, gonna get, I need to schedule Seymour to come back and give y'all an update on what, uh, DMR is telling them about the submerged aquatic vegetation. We're trying to mitigate it, but that's never been done before.
Okay.
And so we're trying to look at some ways to do that, to kinda be innovative, but I need to get them to come back and, and give a presentation to y'all. They can explain it much better than I can about how that's all working.
I, I have a ward meeting in March. It sounds like a perfect agenda topic. I'd love for you to come speak on that.
Perfect.
Thank you, Director.
We, dredging and paving is one of those things that we're trying to do a, as a maintenance thing, and not as a reaction to, to problems. So now, remember that the money that we're accepting here and putting to the dredging is, is the additional port money, so we have to be careful about where we put it. Sedimentation or sediment removal is one of the logical places for us to put some of that county money.
Okay, all right. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, item F involves a quitclaim deed. Is there anything unusual about this, or?
Uh, just, just that it took so long to, uh, to get it done. It's, it's been pending, I think, uh, for a number of years, and there was some confusion about who had to submit which easement to who first, between the city and, and the Rosses, but it, it's, it was originally vacated, I think, um, in seventy-one, then it was re-vacated and re-authorized about ten years ago, and it just has never been done, so.
Okay, so we're just following through. There's nothing unusual about all this, and we still retain, what, a fifteen-foot easement, I think, in there?
Right.
Good deal, all right.
Nobody can put a fence in there either, so.
We don't wanna hear anymore about fences. All right, thank you. That's it.
Vacation, is that thirty feet altogether? And you vacate fifteen feet of it?
Uh, the total vacation, I think, is, uh, thirty feet, but there was an existing easement, and so they're can, they're allowing a fifteen-foot easement on the southern half of the thirty-foot right-of-way. I think they're just gonna use it for some, um, extra, extra parking, probably in the, in the non-easement area.
How, how did you have to have a quitclaim deed? Why did it go that way?
Anytime the city, uh, conveys, we, we basically do it as a quitclaim deed, and it's an easement. Uh, that's a good, that's a good valid transfer of title. We're just not warranting that title is perfect. That's the only difference between a quitclaim and a warranty deed.
Yeah, I was just wondering, 'cause so many of we did that, like the warranty deeds. I was just wondering why you went to quitclaim this way. We did a bunch on the party, whether it was in between people's yards, give me fifteen feet, whatever it was, you know?
Yeah, we might do a warranty deed if somebody is paying us a, a nice sum of money, but I'm just confirming vacation, we, we do a quitclaim deed.
So there's exchange, no money at all?
That's right.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Guines?
I'm good.
Mr. Lawrence?
He's gonna be disappointed if he doesn't have some.
On L, are we just adjusting money? You had to subtract the money on L. Adjust compensation, you said, on L.
L is in Lima.
Okay, yeah.
Lawrence.
L is the, um, L is the case we had a while back where we were, um, we have a tax purchaser that we are, uh, to secure a piece of the property, that we were doing a title suit against a tax purchaser, and so this is to refund what that tax purchaser paid, uh, as part of our quiet title lawsuit.
So that's what you settled?
Right.
Okay.
We're proposing that as a settlement.
That's it.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Is there any?
Oh, yeah, sorry. We need to remove and table. Oh, okay. Never mind, we're not tabling. Never mind. Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote. Any exceptions? Barrett? Glavin?
None.
Tisdale?
None.
Guines? Lawrence? All right. Being no code enforcement, do we have a motion on the routine agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Law, uh, Tisdale, sorry, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, let's see.
Put your mic on.
Last third class received one point seven trillion, and we should have eleven million before you know that.
We have a million seven in the house.
Sir.
We have a million seven in the house.
One point seven is in the house, as the last sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the routine? Unanimous vote with Deming out of the room. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, I mean, Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Unanimous vote, meeting adjourned. Happy Mardi Gras.